Good evening, at this time I'd like to call the regular monthly meeting of the Hamlet City Council to order. Like to welcome those who are here as guests tonight. And we're, again, we're somewhat informal in trying to control the number of people we have in and uh, so we'll continue with that. I would ask at this time that we have a moment of silence that we can remember those who have been sick or passed away. And also remember Melanie Goodwin too, who passed away recently. Amen. Counsel, you have before you tonight the agenda. There's one addition that will be added is item number twenty-two A. That's gonna be a short closed session for General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, A three, for an attorney-client privilege. And that won't last long, but other than that, everything is still the same. What are your wishes?
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Approve likewise. Item number four is approval for the minutes from August the eleventh, the regular in the closed session meetings. Hopefully everyone's had an opportunity to look at the closed session meetings, so what are your wishes on these two?
Move that we adopt.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Oppose likewise. We now move to item number five, which is comments from attendees. Do we have any attendee here tonight who wishes to make a comment on something that is not on the agenda? Okay, if not, we'll move along. Counsel, we have before us tonight several rezoning part, uh, rezonings. And the first one we have before us is rezoning number one. David and Kim Lindsay filed a rezoning petition for their parcel on Vance Street, which is over there behind uh, a service station and up the street there. And right now it's currently zoned as uh, part of it is already zoned as B two general business and they're asking that the remaining portion be re-zoned to B two. And at this time I'll open the floor to the public hearing and anyone who wishes to make a comment. I believe we have Ms. Lindsay with us tonight. Okay. Go ahead, comments. You do not have any comments, okay?
I'm here for you.
Oh, okay. Counsel, do you have any questions on this matter? Okay, if not, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Move along to item number seven, which is consistency statement in decision of rezoning partial. At this time, I would ask for a motion to adopt a consistency statement indicating the proposed changes are in accordance with the City of Hamlet's ordinance.
So moved.
Have a motion? Have a second? All in favor say aye? Oppose likewise. That's approved.
Thanks very much.
The second item that we have, item number eight, is rezoning at seven oh seven Spring Street.
Don't we have to, we have to adopt the rezoning? We have to have a motion to adopt the rezoning.
Oh, okay, I missed that.
Step three.
Yeah, step three. A motion, I need a motion to adopt the rezoning.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor say aye? Oppose likewise. Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, item number eight. I'll try to do better on this one. Jerry and Gwen Gaddis with Air Specialties has filed a rezoning petition for seven oh seven Spring Street. Request, the request is to rezone the parcel from residential six to general business. Uh, the abutting property was also zoned as B two in August of twenty nineteen. The planning board met on August the seventeenth of twenty twenty and offers a favorable recommendation on the rezoning. At this time, I'll open the floor. A public hearing, if I have any comments from anyone regarding this. Okay, if not, I'll close the public hearing. Move along to item number nine. At this time, I'd like to have, ask for a motion to adopt a consistency statement indicating the proposed changes are in accordance with the City of Hamlet's ordinance.
I move.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor say aye? Oppose likewise. Thank you. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to approve the rezoning.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye? Oppose likewise. Item number ten. Department of Hearing number three. Rezoning a parcel on Highway one seventy-seven south. Pioneer Five LLC has filed a rezoning petition for seven point two-four acre tract located on Highway one seventy-seven south. The parcel is in the city's ETJ and uh, they have requested to rezone the parcel from business, neighborhood business to residential. Eight, surrounding properties, if you're aware, there's a new Family Dollar store, I believe it is, on the corner of Airport Road and one seventy-seven. And they're wishing to build some houses in there behind it. And at this time, I would open the floor for a public hearing. Is there anyone here that has comments regarding this? Okay. No one has any comments, alright. At this time, I would ask for, I'd close the public hearing and ask for a motion to adopt a consistency statement indicating that proposed changes are in accordance with the City of Hamlet's ordinance.
I move.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor say aye? Oppose likewise. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to approve the rezoning of this piece of property.
Make a motion to approve.
May I ask a question?
Yes ma'am, go ahead.
And it may, it's probably directed toward Yale, but when we change this from B three to an R eight, does that restrict the development of businesses in this seven point two acre parcel?
Yeah.
So, okay. So it can no longer be neighborhood business, like a dollar store, right?
That's right. Okay, I had a motion. Did I have a second? Okay, I got a second. All in favor, say aye? Oppose likewise. Alright, thank you very much. Yes sir, thank you. That's a lot of rezoning. Uh, item number twelve is approval of the L K C Engineering Letter of Agreement we discussed at the last meeting. And we awarded RFQ at the wastewater treatment plant last month. The company's letter of agreement services, we need to consider and vote on the agreement. What are your wishes?
I move that we approve.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a second? Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye? Oppose likewise. Thank you. At this time, we have a request for a presentation by Mr. Bowie with Air Production and Services Incorporated. Uh, Mr. Bowie?
Good evening, Counsel, Mayor, staff.
Wait a minute, I'll stop just a minute, we're getting too many people in here. Let's have two of your people be fine.
Okay. Alan, you wanna come up?
Yeah, that'd be good. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Apologies for that. Uh, so we wanted to come to you tonight and during this pandemic, we know that everyone's in kind of a situation, we're trying to find ways to fight it. And um, just, at least so we can get back into operations in all of our areas, whether it be in the administrative, administrative building, the water department, Parks and Rec, or wherever it may be that we have gatherings. And we, we have some items here that we're gonna present. We have James and Alan here with us from Olympus and myself and Brad Harris here from Air Production and Service out of Pembroke. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Alan to tell you some things about it. Uh, we do have one item that we can't show you in here because we need the glass panes to separate us from the actual U V C light. So after the council meeting, we're gonna have you guys step out. I know you have a closed session, so it'll be after the meeting, take a brief moment, step out, take a look at it. This is just our demo that we're gonna show you. Uh, but we have sold these things to some places already. So without anything further, I'll turn it over to Alan to tell you a little bit about it, okay?
Thank you.
Hi, um, the fact that I'm wearing this mask kinda tells everybody where we're at. Um, you know, I think the top of everybody's list is figuring out ways to either protect ourselves or protect the public or, you know, clean, sanitize, protect us against something. We've got several products that will kinda let you do that. Uh, the first one we're gonna show you is a temperature checker. You don't touch it, you walk up to it, you hold your wrist up to it and it'll tell you whether you have a temperature or not. It's great for, you know, you could have one at the front door, people come in this facility or others. They could check and see whether they have a fever or not without somebody standing there trying to check them. The wrist mechanism allows you to do it much more accurately than the forehead. So you don't have to have a person monitoring it. You don't have to have somebody standing there every day, it doesn't get tired, it'll do them all day long. And it's a great way for schools or businesses or, you know, any facility to really have protection twenty-four seven. So at least you know the person you're sitting next to doesn't have a fever. And that's the first step. The next two products we're gonna show you, one is a U V C locker. And it basically allows you to put things like your computers, your cell phones, anything in. And in a few minutes, it'll sanitize them so that you know they're clean. Cell phone's one of the dirtiest things because you tote it everywhere. Set it down on stuff and go about your business and don't realize it's one of the dirtiest things. The other unit that's outside that you'll see once you go out there is actually a floor unit. We can sanitize this, this whole room here in about fifteen minutes. It's gonna kill mold, it's gonna kill bacteria, viruses, certainly COVID, flu, all those things. The light is gonna zap it. So for your maintenance crew to be able to drag that around every night and sanitize all your offices and all your facilities really would make a big difference in, in certainly the fight against COVID. So I'm gonna set up the temperature check, checker. Anybody that'd like to come up and, and um, test it or certainly welcome to, it's real easy to use. It doesn't take very much time at all. You basically just walk up to the unit.
Verification succeeded, please check your temperature. No temperature, please proceed.
And that's it, you move on. So you can get a crowd too quickly. Takes less than half a second to do. More accurate than the forehead. They said, some of the, you know, we're selling this to different groups and one of the groups said they got one because they didn't want people getting mad at the people who were checking their temperatures. So this way, the machine's telling you you have a fever and need to move on rather than a person telling you you need to move on. So it's a much more, um, you know, it's just a better way of doing it, let's say. Any questions on this or anything I can?
That, that looks identical to one at U N C Pembroke in a building that I go in down there on a regular basis.
And we installed.
Dr. Smith's office right across the street has one.
Right, well, I, we didn't, I don't think we installed them, but the ones, the university bought a number of them. Having been most of their buildings for that very reason. And it's really been helping them.
Okay, we appreciate it. Mr. Bowie, did you wanna add anything?
Really, on, on this device here, it is something like you said, the universities are going into and, and we've had numerous amounts of folks coming to us. We've gone to Robinson County Schools. Uh, we'll be going to Richmond County Schools as well as Richmond County itself, Rockingham City Council. We're, we're just gonna introduce this. I, I just think something like this to have in your facility, no matter where it's at, is, is, is really a great idea, a great thing to have. And, and it does keep someone from standing in your face and, and just checking your temperature on your forehead, so.
And they gotta have these Fort Brack, we're starting, we're starting to look at using them, so we should deliver them there as well.
Let me ask a question.
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes, sir.
If I sat at the door of the City Hall and somebody comes in and push, somebody tells you to put the wrist over there, whose monitor, does the girl behind the desk have a thing to monitor or she gotta get up and go there and look?
No. The way this works is, um, you can hook a cable to it back through your network, it can be monitored remotely. So you could have somebody behind glass monitoring it. You'd be able to see their face, their temperature, all that stuff. So it can be monitored remotely, yes.
Has, has camera and all built in, so you can see who is actually at the?
And it does, it will let you record that as well, so that if you wanna keep track for tracing purposes, you can see who came in, maybe they test positive, well, you can see who came in before them or after them or whatever, so you can know who else was around them. That sort of thing.
If we had heavy traffic, does somebody have to monitor it all the time wherever they were? If we reopen the water department and City Hall?
Well, a lot of these places though are finding that the people sort of self-monitor themselves. I mean, people don't wanna make somebody else sick and they may not know they have a fever, but they walk up to the thing, so like with the students at U N C P, you know, they're just kinda taking themselves out of the mix when they realize that, hey, indeed, they've got a fever, they don't feel well, whatever. So you'd be surprised, you really wouldn't have to monitor it as close as you might think because people just kind of eliminate themselves.
What did you do this week, guys? Obviously, I saw it turn green.
Beep, 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 it squawks at you. Pretty good.
So it makes a noise.
It does.
So hopefully whoever's behind you says, how you gotta go, you gotta go.
And you can turn that off as well, you know, for little kids and stuff in the grade schools, they don't want it, you know, scaring the kids or whatever, you can turn that off. And, and you can customize a lot of the features in it, you can set whatever you want to be the, the temperature that sets it off. If it's ninety-nine point five, hundred point five, whatever the temperature you wanna set it at. So it allows for a range of temperature. Also, it will tell you, if I walk up without a mask, it will tell me he's, he's already unplugged. It will tell you to wear a mask if you're not wearing one. So it will say, please wear a mask. Now, if you got one, it just says go on about your business, but if you don't have one, it'll tell you and make you, it'll tell you to wear one.
Very good.
Other questions on that?
And we thank you again.
One last thing, one move, we got, we got the thing outside, we'll see afterward. This, um, we can change the size of it, so it's not stuck at this size, meaning that if you need a tubular big locker or something like this, but um, the university uses these to like put camera equipment and PCs and small things like that in it to sanitize them very quickly before the next class comes in. So like your equipment and stuff that a hundred different people handle, if you put it in there, ten or fifteen minutes, it's nice and clean, well sanitized. We don't clean anything, we just kill the germs and bacteria and stuff.
It kills mold and it's not over.
Big coli, it kills all, all kinds of, you know, all those viruses and flu and COVID and, you know, all those kinds of stuff. So, uh, but it, it works just like a normal, you know, you would be able to put your stuff in, close it up, run it on, you got a timer, fifteen minutes, you'd be satisfied.
Very good. And you say you have a, you have a room size cleaner? That's, you're gonna show us that, okay.
That you'd be able to clean or sterilize this room with and sanitize it. And um, it's, it's perfect for places, because they, they call us all the time to come in and do this sort of stuff and we do it, you know, for a lot of businesses. But what happens the next day or the day after the next week? Well, if you have your own units, then your cleaning staff can be doing this on a nightly basis. You know, right after you all left tonight, they could wheel it in here, sanitize it.
What, you're gonna just turn it on and go out of the room?
Yes, it's got a timer on it.
Yes, and a remote, just like, um.
But you just take it from, like, one of my water partners in here, so you can turn it on and off.
Right, so I can turn it on and off here with this. And then you move it from, you know, you, like, the guy might be cleaning up down the hall, he'd have it in here where there were no people. Run it for fifteen minutes and then he'd be able to move to the next area and just run on and off.
And one of the questions I had when I first saw this locker system was, what about the bottom? And there's a, there's a mirror system, reflective type material, so that the light is, it's going all through the cabinet.
So it's bouncing all around. So basically, even though the light starts shining on it, it gets bounced around the backside of it and, you know, it's the, the other parts sanitized.
There's no questions, we'll let you guys continue and then after the meeting, we'll show you the mobile unit.
Thank you. That'd be great. Thank you, Alan. Did you have something else? Okay. Okay, item, uh, moving along to item number fourteen. Uh, Mrs. Deborah Stigall's term on the planning board expires in October. She has requested reappointment to serve another term. Mr. Gerard Morrison was appointed in July to fill a vacancy on the board. That expires in September. And the council is being requested to reappoint both Ms. Stigall and Mr. Morrison to three-year terms. Counsel, what are your wishes?
I make a motion to approve.
Uh, both?
Yeah.
Ms. Stigall and Mr. Morrison?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
I have a second, Counsel, do I have any further comment? Uh, I guess the only comment I would have is that ca, that committee over there has been doing an excellent job the last several years, so it'd be good to keep it up. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Alright, that's approved. Thank you. Item number fifteen is appointment to the Hamlet A B C Board. Uh, Ms. Dorothy Bynum's term on A B C Board expires in October. She has indicated to the A B C Board that she would like to be reappointed. Uh, staff has received an application also from Mrs. Wendy Masagie. The chairman, Mr. Jerry Thomas, was advised of Ms. Masagie's application. The board has recommended the reappointment of Ms. Bynum. What are your wishes, Counsel?
Make a motion to reappoint Ms. Bynum.
Okay. Did I, I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye? Oppose likewise, thank you. Ms. Bynum is reappointed. Uh, item number sixteen is approval of tax releases. Uh, Counsel, what are your wishes on those? Have a motion to approve by Mr. Stewart?
Second.
Got a second from Mr. Martin? All in favor, say aye? Oppose likewise. Item number seventeen. Counsel, we have before us tonight, uh, citizens' participation plan for the Community Development Block Grant and our city manager, Mr. Christian, would like to discuss this plan.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this plan before you tonight is a citizen participation plan for the Community Development Block Grant process. Uh, these types of plans are required to apply for the grant. Uh, and they just simply outline the structure for receiving citizen feedback and requirements for the city to respond to concerns or anything relating to the grant itself. Following, um, your consideration on this item and the subsequent public hearing, uh, we will be applying for a Community Development Block Grant for coronavirus relief. Um, this, this window for, um, these C D B G C V for coronavirus funds um, opened on September the first and it's on a first come, first served basis, so uh, we're trying to apply to get specifically some relief for our citizens who are behind on their utility bills uh, or housing payments. So, um, we are still, uh, putting the, all the application together. And before you tonight are just the minimum requirements to apply for the grant, um, for your consideration.
Have we heard anything from the county regarding our submission for funds from the one point eight million that was sent to the county?
Yes, ma'am. Um, that is a separate pot of money. Uh, we have received word from that. Um, it is, uh, the allotment for Hamlet of the total funds that the county received was a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars.
Out of one point eight million?
That's correct.
We got a hundred and fifty-eight thousand?
That's correct.
And we submitted a request of seven hundred and some thousand?
I believe it was nine hundred and forty, but yes.
They gave us a hundred and fifty-eight.
That's correct.
Any other questions on this? Uh, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor say aye? All opposed, likewise? Item number eighteen is public hearing number four, Community Development Block Grant Application. Uh, the city manager have comments on this?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned, this is part of the same C D B G application. We're required to have an initial public hearing, um, for consideration from the public. This was advertised in the newspaper, um, uh, last week. And, um, there will be a second public hearing requirement upon completion of the application itself so that, uh, citizens can review the application and ask questions. Again, these, uh, public hearings and notice requirements are, um, just, just basic, um, prerequisite requirements for the C D B G process.
Okay, this time, uh, open the floor to a public hearing. Anyone who has comments? Anybody on Counsel have any comments? Alright, if not, we'll close the public hearing, thank you. Moving along to item number nineteen is the mayoral proclamation for Constitution Week. I will read this, "Whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the two-hundred-and-thirty-third anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And whereas Public Law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September the seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I Bill Bayless, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Hamlet, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which have privilege involved. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Hamlet to be affixed this eighth day of September of the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty." And with that, we move along to item number twenty, which is, uh, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, let me first begin by addressing a few old business items, um, from previous meetings. Um, during the August twenty twenty regular meeting, uh, council unanimously approved the Hamlet Rescue and E M S contract. Um, the intent of this agreement was always to, uh, keep the existing agreement and only modify the, uh, timing and schedule of the payment. Um, however, the draft included in the packet inadvertently omitted language from, uh, a July tenth, twenty eighteen addendum where council agreed to pay fifty percent of ambulance fuel cost. Uh, this omission was corrected prior to executing the agreement and no further action is required.
And no further action is required. I just wanted to make you aware of that clerical change on that agreement. Another follow-up to the previous meeting, uh as Ms. Covington mentioned, was we recently requested uh the coronavirus relief funds. At the time of the last meeting, the request was not finalized. Um, it ended up being a request for approximately nine hundred and forty thousand dollars or for COVID nineteen response. Um, the county has divided the funds and allocated a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars uh to Hamlet for response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Um, as a sidebar, I think Rockham's request was two point something million. Um, I think that uh. The needs have always outweighed the resources when it comes to this pandemic, and um and that continues to be true, and we keep uh. We're grateful for what we have, but we are certainly uh in need of support and ways to respond to this, this pandemic, so. Um, with old business addressed, I want to note that um it's um uh very important that everyone respond to their senses and get everyone you know to respond to your senses. That's how we become eligible for grants and uh other federal funding, uh so please respond. I know the response rate has been really low with the pandemic, so. Please share the word to respond as much as possible. Um, with the um governor's latest change in the um uh reopening phase. Uh, we are uh not making any immediate changes to our facilities, however, we are constantly reviewing ways to uh responsibly open. And um, and, and make, make ourselves available to the public. Um, at City Hall, the drive-through is still open. Everyone is available by phone and email. And uh if, if we can't handle your request remotely, we will um work with you to schedule an appointment or get you whatever information you need. Um, although this uh, moving on, although the Seaboard Festival has been canceled, uh I want to note that the five K is still happening. Um, check Facebook for details on how to participate. My understanding is they're doing that virtually where you can run at your convenience. You still get your shirt and your medals and things of that nature. Um, and uh finally, I want to also acknowledge the passing of uh Melanie Goodwin. Although I never got a chance to meet Mrs. Goodwin, her positive impact on Hamlet and Richmond County, um it sets the bar high for all public servants and um. And, and that's very clear to me, and I know she'll be sorely missed by her friends and family. Um, so our thoughts go out to them. Thank you.
Um, one thing, I wanted, the food truck Friday.
Yes.
On the eighteenth, you might want to mention that.
Yeah, that's correct. So um, we are promoting, um helping to promote our local businesses, specifically uh Seafoody, Just Bought, One Eleven, um Raleigh Street, and um. I met with Ken Dell Robinson, and he's just a, he's just a ball of energy, and uh he was kind of thinking about doing. A food truck thing, and how can we get more people to downtown, of course responsibly, so we're doing a drive-through food truck event. Um, obviously, people will be expected to follow the COVID nineteen guidelines. We're not uh having a gathering, but we want to bring people to town. Uh, drive-through, pick up some food, support a local business, and um, and uh, and, and kind of uh go on. That will be held at the visitor center. So you can drive in one side of the parking lot, get your food, drive out the other side, good to go. And that's on September the eighteenth, and they're gonna be open for lunch and for dinner. So uh please participate in that, and there's a second food truck. Um, and the name of it escapes me, and you'll have to forgive me for that, but it's on Facebook. Uh, you should get all the details there, and uh we hope you can come out and support our businesses in our community.
Okay.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, did the county give you any explanation as to how they arrived at this figure that they uh were gonna lot Hamlet?
Yes, sir. They um, I had my notes pulled up. I thought that, that may be a question. Uh, my unders- my understanding is. Um, each community was allocated twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, and the remaining portion. Of the twenty-five percent that was set aside from municipalities, um, the remaining portion was a- allocated on an ad valorem tax basis. Was.
I'm sorry.
So, so they, the one, they received approximately one point eight, they set aside twenty-five percent, they gave everybody twenty-five thousand dollars. And whatever was left, um was allocated on an ad valorem basis was the, uh, I asked for that clarification, and that was what the response that I got from the uh county finance director, and I believe that's been. A report in the press as well, so uh forgive me if I'm getting details wrong, but that's my general understanding.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
So there wasn't a consistent means to distribute that, is that what you're saying? Each, the, each county made their own? Is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, that's correct. Yeah, the counties had uh broad authority um to, on how they were gonna distribute the funds. Um. The, actually, the first draft, the first distribu- distribution of funds had no requirement to give money to municipalities. Uh, the second version where uh, the second distribution of payment uh to the counties, uh the law changed from the counties may distribute to, to cities. Or municipalities to they, they shall do twenty-five percent. Uh, other than that, there were no other guidance or requirements in the law itself.
Was there any logic to the fact that this money was allotted to the counties with complete disregard practically to the municipalities? I mean. We have a huge response, medical response responsibility in this town, which is a town responsibility. We fund it and it operates within our fiscal city limits. And also in a huge area outside, the largest response district in the county. So we've had a tremendous impact from that standpoint, and yet the legislature thinks the county needs this money worse than the municipalities. What is the logic?
Um, I can't, I won't uh venture into uh assuming the legis-
Is there any?
The logic of individual or legislators as a group. I will say that uh I have worked closely with our advocates at the North Carolina League of Municipalities. To make sure that our interest is known and that our concerns are heard. Um, and I know the fight uh to go from. They may give it to cities to they shall give twenty-five percent was a big fight, and, and I think it was a step in the right direction. I do however, uh as individually, uh believe that um there, there's still not a lot of direction and clarity on how. Uh, those funds were to be distributed, and um, and it is a point of uh, is a challenge for us. As you mentioned, we have. One of the largest uh emergency response districts in the county, and that's a huge burden that we bear uh for the county, and I think that um. I think that our, our, our citizens are, are grateful for the high level of service that we provide, and we're doing everything we can to keep that going.
They're not making it any easier.
Have they said what they're doing with the remainder of the money they have left?
Um, their, their plan, um, and to the extent that it's a plan, it's really a state form that's, that accounts for the money. Um, they have a, they have a plan similar to ours that has dollar figures attached to things, but it, I haven't asked for specifics and I can't share any. Details simply because I don't know them. I'm, I'm sure they have ideas or thoughts.
They have a timer to spend it, right?
Yeah, all of these funds, uh our money or the county's money have to be spent prior to December thirtieth of twenty twenty.
Our money was spent before we requested it.
That's correct.
We've already incurred this responsibility.
That's correct.
And it should be noted that our paramedics are backup to the first help, so it wouldn't be out of the normal to see our folks anywhere in the county.
That's correct.
If needed, in an emergency situation, and that happens a lot when they're transporting the volume of people they're transporting between here and Moretown and, and other areas. So they had the cities didn't get no more than that, and they got very little. I mean, we didn't even get a per, small percentage.
Like I said before, the county should be in really good financial shape.
Yeah, that's right.
That's, that's what's happening.
Yeah.
We're getting the money the way we paid it out.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and no other questions from the manager at this time? Okay, we'll go to, onto comments at council, uh Ms. Covington.
Um, well, I was gonna mention food truck, and Matt mentioned it, but I really think that's a kind of a novel idea that they've come up with to encourage people to come downtown and. Uh, you know, we don't have to gather, but we can at least transport ourselves downtown and around and through, and it's something to look forward to, and. Also, I had gotten a couple of comments in the last several weeks regarding the police department. And neighbors in communities that had been having some kind of ongoing problems. That were not appropriate in residential areas, and they have all come back and said what wonderful response they had out of the police department, the Hamlet Police Department, and. That the chief and his officers took a, a personal interest in helping them resolve these issues, and they're pleased with the resolution and. You know, they think things are genuinely better, and also, I encourage everybody to look at Facebook and see the article about the. Effort of Chief McMasters to curb, um, I've forgotten what it, the term they used. Anyhow, youth crime. And he's been, got a program set up with daycare centers all through the area. So that they can go in and work with these children at a very young age, because he said he felt like this would be the beginning of, of turning these kids around. So that they didn't become active in criminal activities later in their lives. So I think our police department is doing a great job. And I, well, our, the rest of our city people are phenomenal. We had water issues at my house this week, and they were great. They're just, they're responsive, they care, they help you any way they can. I just don't think anybody in the world has better employees than we do. They feel like family members.
I have uh, I have talked to a number of people, the same thing, got phone calls on it, but one of the big things is people, when they, and I've told them, I said. When you see something suspicious, call it.
Yeah.
I said, nobody's gonna know who it is. I said, call it in before it gets to, to be a worse situation, and uh, so hopefully that'll help some too, but it, it's tough. Thank you. Mister Stewart?
Um, I, again, I thank all the city employees, particularly the water department. I know we've had a couple of things go on in the last. Uh, couple of months and then last couple of weeks with water bills and then a letter going out, and people's been calling, so we thank them for being professional with that. Police department, I wanted to say the same thing. I had that written down, Abby. Um, the pledge for success, thanks, that's a, it's a great idea. Um, early on, starting to load the kids with that. Uh, prayers to the Goodwin family. Uh, census, had that down. Please, all citizens, please, please, please fill out that census and count everyone that's living in your household. Please register the vote, it's coming up. We gotta vote. Um, COVID nineteen to all the citizens, please, please, it's not over. Please get behind the mask and please stay at home. Um, that's key. If you have, if you don't have to go to work, um, stay at home. The vacation and, and all that great stuff, we are not out of this thing. We had twenty-nine new cases today, twenty-eight, I believe. And every day there's like ten, sixteen, eleven, whatever. Please, please take it. Uh, we won't never come out of it if we don't take it, seriously. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mister Stewart. Mister Martin?
I'll just reiterate what Ms. Covington then, and uh, uh Marie said, uh, we got great city employees, and I concur with all that. That's all.
Thanks, sir. Mister McLean?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, send thoughts and prayers to the Goodwin family. Um, especially to Wayne and his two children on Melanie's passing. Um, they've really done a lot for the community and specifically Hamlet, and Wayne has not uh lost fact that this is his hometown, and. Um, just honored to consider him a, a friend. Um, would like to see if we could get up with the state, um, the DOT. The right of ways are horrible. Um, in between Hamlet and Rockham, uh, the median out there. Um, and it's not just here, it's everywhere. I mean, the, the grass is three or four foot high. Um, see if they got an idea about when they're gonna start cutting. Um, if not, I mean, we may have to think about doing something ourselves, because it's not even safe if somebody has a flat tire or something out there.
DOT has cut back their personnel extremely.
Yeah.
They have cut everybody to forty hour work weeks, even their major transportation projects. They're down to four days a week now, because of budget problems.
Yeah, I was, I was talking, I was talking to city manager earlier this week about our grass situation out there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it is horrible.
They'll tell you, when you call them, they'll tell you they don't have any money.
Uh-uh, they don't.
Cut it, send them a bill, that's what we ought to do. Um, uh, it, it, it seems like it's been forever, but it really hasn't. Um, uh, Imperial Foods Fire just was a anniversary of that tragedy. Um, just like to send out condolences, um, thoughts and prayers to the family of those that were in, in that. Um, disaster that day, and as well as the surviving folks that are there too. Um, also, going off that same uh line of thinking. Uh, this Friday is a, a very um somber occasion for our country. It's another anniversary ticking by of nine eleven. Um, and with everything that's going on now and um the vilification of police nationwide, um. Wouldn't it be just so great to go back to the time where our officers who, for the most part, do an exceptional job? And everybody in here has committed our department for outside the box thinking and, and programs and um initiatives to, to get that community policing back. Um, just to see what's going on now. Um, it, it hurts me on a personal level. Um, I have, I'm still a certified officer. Um, I've got some real close friends that, that are officers, and my son is a, a federal law enforcement officer as well. And it just breaks my heart to see the footage of these brave people. Um. We just need to pray for our, for our communities. We need to pray for our police, um, cause overall. Our, our, our beliefs are the only thing that keeps us from just falling into chaos, and um. That's all.
Thank you, sir. And uh, I agree with you on uh praying for these police officers. Uh, what they're having to put up with today is just, it's terrible. And uh, we just need to pray for them. Uh, condolences of the city and myself, to the Goodwin family. Uh, Melanie will be uh missed, she was a nice lady, and uh Wayne's just, he's been good to us, the whole family has been, and uh. I remember when she had her law enforcement, uh her lawyer's office right over here across the corner, and uh, so we, and she will be missed. Uh, the census, I just want to uh reinforce that. Uh, if you haven't done your census, please do it. You can do it on the computer, you should have gotten something in the mail on it. But the biggest thing is we have got to have everybody in this town counted. All that's for is just counted. I don't care who you are or where you are, the point is get yourself counted. Because we lose money, lose a lot of issues if we don't have, don't get everybody counted, and I think the other day, we were just a little over fifty percent, if I'm correct. So there's about forty-nine percent of the people need, still need to do their census, and if they come up to you now, they, if you don't send it in, they'll be coming around, they'll have their mask on. They will have a badge, a, a tag that says who they are, and please cooperate with them and let's get everybody counted. Uh, again, remember the food truck Friday, and uh, we appreciate what everyone's doing to try to keep our uh. COVID nineteen down in the city, and if we can help you, please call us and let us know. With that comment, I will make a motion, or ask for a motion to go into closed session.
Make a motion to go into closed session for uh attorney-client privilege, I believe is what it's for.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Got a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Okay, so everybody close the doors?